The hour has arrived. I'll call regular meeting of the City Council to order. Ask you to join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Let's expect fight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't see any guests and nobody registered. Department board reports.
Yes, first want to give you the general fund financial report summary for the year to date ending November 30th, 2012. Our cities, this is unaudited, our cities total revenues to date are $1,562,531.68. Total expenditures to date are $1,402,675.75, which is a positive net difference of revenue over expenditures in the amount of $247,232.57. I will provide, if you would like, a detailed revenue and expenditure report at your request. Just see me after the council meeting. I would like to note out that just as part of our revenue, just an interesting note, it's been almost a year since council passed the contractors BNO. I would like to point out that from July 1st of this year to present, the city has collected $15,525.64 in BNO from contractors. It's money that we appropriate for capital improvement projects, street paving, et cetera. Furthermore, I do anticipate transferring $140,000 of the city's general fund monies to the municipal stabilization fund hopefully by the end of this month. This should bring our municipal stabilization fund to approximately $593.55. Under old business, just some updates, the minor boundary adjustment annexation application, we had to submit a revised portion of the application after getting some feedback from the Upsher County Commission on some meet and bounds requirements descriptions that they wanted to have included in the application. Worked on that, Jay and Matt Himes and Dave McCully worked on that and we submitted that to the commission, our revised application, last week. Had an opportunity to talk to Willie Parker, county administrator, this afternoon and he's anticipating that application will be formally introduced to the commission in the next couple of weeks for consideration. In regards to the Brushy Fort Conference Center at the West Virginia National Guard Armory, I discussed with Scott Barnett the draft for the proposed lease interest agreement between the West Virginia Army National Guard and the city of Buchanan. Scott Barnett, of course, is their legal counsel. He assures me that he'll be providing a draft next week for consideration and changes. This lease agreement will be between the West Virginia Army National Guard and the Buchanan Building Commission. There will be also a sublease agreement between the building commission and the city council, as well as the Upsher County Convention and Visitors Bureau for management of the conference center facility. Once I do get this draft from Mr. Barnett, I'll be sharing that with our city attorney, Dave McCully, Paula Muller, who is the regional representative for the USDA, as well as John Stump, who is our bond counsel with Steptoe and Johnson. This is an important item and part of the component that we need as part of our application for the USDA Community Facilities Loan Program, which we're hopefully wrapping up over the next month or so. Do want to mention another note, under old business, we have received our FEMA reimbursement for the June 29th ratio storm. The city did receive our reimbursement for labor and equipment usage resulting from the storm. Excuse me, the total reimbursement amount was $20,224.94, with $3,998.70 of that money going to general fund for street department and the remaining $16,226.18 going to the three enterprise utility departments. That money will be put directly back into the street department under a budget revision that we'll do later on. Under new business, back to FEMA reimbursement for our sandy storm. The city is in the early process of filing paperwork for reimbursement for the labor and equipment usage resulting from that storm. The mayor recently signed documents formally requesting public assistance from both FEMA and the West Virginia Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. So I'll be working with FEMA representatives in the next month or so to secure that reimbursement for that storm. Under health insurance, new business, the city is working with Bill Hamilton, our representative, and Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is our current healthcare provider, insurance provider, on health insurance options and comparisons in regards to self-insurance and HRAs with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Once we do obtain this information, we will be able to have the opportunity to review those options that our current provider, Highmark Blue Cross and Blue Shield, offers and hopefully move forward with some budgetary decisions and health insurance providers for the 2013-2014 fiscal year. Still staying under new business, under general fund department budgets, it's hard to believe we're almost there, but in early January of 2013, I will be soliciting general fund departments for their 2013-2014 budget requisitions. The first meeting in January, council will also be presented with a mid fiscal year 2012-2013 budget revisions, as well as a mid fiscal year financial report. I just want to get some of this in because I'm not sure who all will be here for the 20th meeting in December. And finally, an item of note with the police department Ford Explorer, as you're all aware, in the budget for this year, Chief Gregory put in for three new police vehicles. We do have those in our possession. One of the vehicles that they have in their old fleet is a 2007 Ford Explorer. Jerry Arnold's, the street department, has shown interest in obtaining that vehicle and I will be transferring that vehicle to their department. This is actually going to save the street department the cost of actually purchasing a replacement vehicle for their fleet. Since it is a general fund department within a general fund department, there won't be any direct compensation made between the street department and the police department. But it is an opportunity, if we can exchange fleet vehicles from one department to the other in kind of an interdepartmental exchange, that's certainly well worth our while in the financial short term to do so. Again, so it saves us from replacing a street department vehicle in our fleet with an existing fleet vehicle we have. I'm losing my voice, but that is all I have unless there's any question.
What's anything about the organizational chart?
Yeah, I can. There's an organizational chart that I've been working with Rich Clemmons, it's been several months ago, at request of the mayor and in conversations to kind of encapsulate the concept of a city administrator and laying out all of the different departments and department heads, coordinating some new department heads and some expansion of some existing supervisors and also creating some supervisory importance for the city engineer as far as mapping and zoning are concerned. It's an interesting chart, but I think this really provides an opportunity for council and the public and department heads to take a look at the organizational structure, resigning some of the changes that we've had over, especially over the last 19 months now. And I believe that's later on in your agenda as a consent agenda.
Jay Hall.
Try to be as brief as I can. Go ahead on some of the projects that are still ongoing. The Gateway East project, which is the sidewalk down the College Avenue from City Hall, still undergoing that lengthy SHPO overview and however, they reported yesterday that it's a top of the list. It is being reviewed now and they hope to have an answer to us late December, early January as to give us our notice to proceed once the weather breaks. The Army National Guard, the good news is that I submitted the plans and specifications for the water line extension on November 20th and those plans are currently being reviewed because the person that does the reviewing will be taking a extended vacation after Christmas and he wants to wrap this project up hopefully before such time, so maybe we timed that pretty well. Also working on the NPDS notice of intent, since we're less than three acres disturbed with this new water line, I have to do what's called a notice of intent. Hope to have that done by the end of December and submit to the DEP. They have 45 days to look at it, but that's one of the official permits that has to be in play before we can construct the water line. Continuing, as Michael had mentioned, to work on the preliminary engineering report for what, for the USDA Department of Agriculture's loan. However, we hit a little sticking point. SHPO down in Charleston notified us that due to possible archaeological sites in the project area, we must conduct a phase one archaeological survey before they will grant us a letter to submit in Michael's package. Since it was kind of an emergency thing due to the timing of Michael's permit, I solicited bids from five archaeological firms, one in Kentucky and four in West Virginia, received three bids. The apparent low bidder, which I opened on the 30th, is Archaeological Consultants of the Midwest from Wheeling, West Virginia. The reason I'm bringing this up is they're working in the Volga area this week over in Barber County and he had asked, you know, once I presented this to you all if I could notify them, you know, with your all's blessing. They were the apparent low bidder. They're in Barber County right now and he's looked at it and he said it won't take more than a day or two to complete the field reconnaissance, field portion of the survey and was wondering, you know, if they were accepted as the low bid, I can notify them tomorrow and they would do the field work in Friday and Saturday, possibly Sunday, and then do the rest of it from the office. But they're just in the next county over, but that's part of the step that has to be done. So I'd like to pause there. I don't know if a motion needs to be made or anything, but they were the apparent low bidder and I would recommend that we accept them to, you know, to conduct the archaeological survey so that we may proceed with the USDA's preliminary engineering report and application for loans.
Seems to me that this is in a, just a normal course of operation, a project we have approved. And I think it's appropriate to entertain a motion to award this contract and proceed.
What was their bid?
$2,094. The next bid was just under four and then the final bid was just under six. But I don't know if it was timing, if he had based his bid knowing that he was going to be in the area, you know, but he's sent a...
What was the name of that company?
It is Archaeological Consultants of the Midwest. From Wheeling, West Virginia. Well, one office in Wheeling, West Virginia.
Motion to award this contract to Archaeological Associates.
Consultants.
Consultants of the Midwest.
Of the Midwest.
Out of Wheeling.
Out of Wheeling.
We have a motion made?
Yep.
We had, did the somatian. Dave Thomas seconded. Okay. Any further discussion on that matter? All in favor, signify as soon as I hear.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Proceed.
Okay.
Where's the archaeological?
It's going to be along the 15-foot right away of the water line.
What sites are there out there?
They found three potential sites.
Three potential sites. So they found an areahead there once.
I do not know.
Pumpkin ball, I guess.
It's a first. I've never had, this is a...
Indian sites or something.
What was that?
Indian sites.
Possible archaeological sites.
Or Native American.
Because of its location to a water stream, a stream, a river source, a water source. All right, McDonald's lane widening, Route 20 South, it's still going through its environmental section review, not a SHPO review, but an environmental section review. And although he's busy, the project manager talked to me yesterday and said he's going to keep things moving on this project and they are still targeting May 28th, 2013 as the start date for that lane widening McDonald's Route 20, College Avenue.
Jay, what does SHPO, the acronym, stand for?
State Historical Preservation Office. Two completely separate entities. The environmental review section is with the DOH and then SHPO is Division of Culture and History.
What's the projected timeframe as far as completing that?
Lane widening, I do not know. I'm still looking for a preliminary, a revised preliminary design based upon their site visit with Sam and I this past May. It's been a while. I haven't seen a revised draft or design.
Because you'll have to take another route to get around.
I don't know. Moving on to the public safety complex, the wiring and the data cabling, as I reported last time, has been completed. The upcoming tasks for this next month is the delivery and installation of the drywall. Since we last met, I had also bid out the drywall portion of the project to supply the materials for the drywall and Harper lumber from Buchanan slash Rock Cave was the low bidder and they are scheduled to deliver the drywall on Monday morning. And then Austrian Architects, as part of their contract with the city from a few years back, they have acquired the three subcontractors that are going to be required on this next phase of the project. The city, in order to keep some of their costs down, want to purchase the materials directly, you know, for these contractors that they will need, but then the services, you know, they'll provide the services to put that equipment in. HVAC contractor is Davis Heating, Air Conditioning and Electric out of Elkins, West Virginia and the labor portion of that project is $24,950 and the city will be buying the equipment, including the three air conditioning slash heating units for a total of $22,626.30, so bringing us just under $48,000 for the HVAC portion of the public safety complex. The fire suppression slash sprinkler system went to Pass Fire Protection from Elkview, West Virginia. The labor cost, $23,725 and the material cost to sprinkle the building, $11,473. And the fire alarm system, which is also required, was awarded to Small Ridge Electric from Buchanan. He didn't break his, I mean, it's itemized, but he didn't separate the materials from the labor as far as costs. Their total package is $11,000, even though we've asked for a material cost breakdown so that we can purchase that. But right now, his portion of the project would be $11,000 and that includes labor and materials, but you know, we've asked him to break that out so we can buy the materials.
What kind of warranties do you get on these systems?
I believe it's three to five years and I can ask Bryson that tomorrow since he handled that portion of the project. This was already in the works before I came onboard, but that was part of the task that he was to do was to secure and have that to keep the costs down. I don't want to say a design bill, but it was based upon numerous site visits from the various contractors who wanted to bid or participate in this and they've come up with the system that they feel, you know, will work in the public safety complex.
What was the total of the fire sprinkler?
The fire sprinkler, $23,725 for labor and $11,473 for materials. Just over 20, 35 plus or minus.
But you'll get the definite terms of the warranty on those systems?
Yeah, I'll ask Bryson for those tomorrow, the first of next.
Because that can make a big difference.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. And that, oh, working and then finally, what I'm working on now is the Victoria Hill tank, looking at the, you know, installation of the new tank up there. I'm working on the specifications, some preliminary designs and I'm in contact with the Bureau for Public Health. And I mentioned earlier, the Philippi office feels that we need to have two days of storage for not only the city, but the outlined PSDs. And in speaking with Bill Harold, who's out of Charleston, who oversees all the offices, you know, and brought him up to speed as far as the city's storage capacity in their tanks and all the PSD storage capacities, plus the fact that the water plant's only operating at plus or minus 40%, which is a good thing. We haven't, you know, if we had to turn up the plant to create more water, we could. You know, Bill's not going to make us put in that extra storage that the Philippi office wants. So I've got to get some facts and figures together, which I'm working on now also, and get those to him because he is also the one that's doing the review on the water line for the National Guard and I want to get those into, this information into his hand before he takes off after Christmas. But he's, you know, we're looking at a million gallon tank, possibly on Victoria Hill, to replace the 600,000 gallon tank at St. Joe's. And that is it for me.
Questions?
If anybody has any questions. All righty.
Mayor, if I could elaborate on something that Jay meant from a financial perspective. The three contractors that Jay's talking about, plus the drywall, and I want to put this out there because this is something we're going to have to talk about when we sit down as a finance committee, as a council budget time, but just something to throw out there. This is going to basically exhaust the money we have in our bond. We did have that $200,000 roof, which really cut into that, so that's why that's down. So this will get us to a point and this point is going to basically end about project season for Jerry to start up. So we're going to have to put the brakes on a little bit, but there'll have to be some decisions that'll have to be made by council moving forward because the money that we have in our bond will be exhausted in the future. So there's something to keep in mind.
I'm nearly as length of the reporter as Jay. Oh, goodness. Waysport hasn't been in a couple of months, so I think that's that. Over and short. We are continuing, I'm continuing to work on the crossroad signage on Ways collection as well as, we are doing a lot of fleet maintenance and we'll be doing the sandblast impans of all the recycling bins that we had out there. So we've been gearing up to take that task on in Ways and Watcher. With CONSOL, Public Works Board, they met, Jay asked where my notes were. I said, "I don't need notes." We talked the entire meeting about lighting on North Spring and Canal Street and I believe that's on your agenda tonight for an additional light. I did meet with Steve Jones from the power company and we took a look at that and he as well as myself would recommend a couple additional lights there, overhead lights like there. Biggest issue, there's about four out on the Canal Street side. And with Steve, talking with Steve, there's one I know that's been out to post office. We've had about a dozen calls on and it's, if you noticed, it's had a y'all ribbon tied around the post. As much as I'd like it to be around the Old Oak Tree and bring the soldiers home, that's not what it was for. It was to identify that pole as one that the lightnings fixed on, that's something of a step we have to take. But he said that was, they were getting numerous requests in for light repairs as well as new services, but they're still dealing with sanding and they're not increasing their crews. So every day, they're continuing to get further and further behind. So he said, "I'd like to tell you tomorrow," but he said, "Better answers maybe never." So, you know, don't expect something to happen overnight on that. We've continued or completed the large structure at Yolba and I've got the canvas installed on that, the fabric. And the guys have been every day and I think everyone has witnessed every day concrete sidewalks. And I really want to commend them that they set themselves a goal and have achieved a goal they set for themselves. And I think that says a lot, you kind of tell them what you need and they push themselves. That's all I have. Good crew. Any questions for Jerry?
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. A few updates. Following the last meeting, we are supposed to, within five days after the meeting in which you adopt a utility ordinance, make our preliminary filing with the Public Service Commission and four days following the city council meeting, I submitted about 40 pages worth of documents, including nine different documents that were necessary as part of that preliminary filing with the Public Service Commission. The letter is in your packet tonight. I had asked Rich and Teresa to make a part of the minutes of tonight's meeting, the post-adoption legal notice, which had not yet been prepared. I see that in your agenda, you have the mayor's press release, which I had given at the last meeting. So when we go to prepare the minutes, I want to be very careful that we actually have the post-adoption legal notice in tonight's meeting minutes. It's not necessary for the council to approve that. That is in fact what will be filed along with some other documents with the secondary, the final filing, which will include the publisher's certificates on the post-adoption legal notice. They also ask that if it's available, that I provide the actual newspaper pieces showing that the press has taken notice of our press release, which I will file also. And the only document that I have not yet prepared for that final filing, which we'll do next week, is the affidavit of Mr. Clemmons and his dead as city reporter, who tells us all about, he said he prepared the postcards for AMBI, he posted the notices and the ordinance out front in the foyer at City Hall, it's been put on the website. He has received the publisher's certificates with regard to both the pre-adoption notice and the post-adoption notice. Years ago, that affidavit wasn't necessary. Now it's a three or four page affidavit. So that's the last thing to prepare. Everything looks fine. There's been no indication of any protest with the Public Service Commission. If everything stays the way it should, our new rates will go into effect on January 1 of 2013. I continue, and Rich Clemmons has had, I think, three or four calls here at City Hall. I've had one call and one person caught me on the street last week while I was going up to the courthouse about the TV cable increase. As I indicated at the last council meeting and as those of you who have been around for a number of years have heard me say on many occasions, there is unequivocally absolutely nothing that as a governmental entity that the city of Buchanan can do regarding the TV cable rates. That is, we lost that opportunity in 1984 when the United States Congress deregulated the cable industry. So it's like, why are you people letting them do this? It's because you get 5% of that increase. And that is true. For every dollar that the cable company makes on distributing TV cable services, not their phone services, not their internet services, but on things relative to their delivery of TV cable, the city, as part of its franchise fee, as authorized by that 1984 federal act, does receive 5% sort of a tax on their services. So if a cable company makes an extra buck, the city of Buchanan realizes an extra nickel. I guess my concern is, is from the city revenue perspective, part of that equation, you see a lot of folks, I think, jumping to some alternative providers to get their TV stuff and as that happens, we do not have the ability to yet to tap into satellite providers. We don't get 5% from the Dish Network or anything of that sort, strictly from Sudden Light. So I hope that helps clarify that issue. The 30 days came and went since the last meeting on ordinance 368, which was the trade with Patty Jo Wymer. And the week after that 30 days came and went, we prepared the necessary deed, the mayor signed it, acknowledged it, delivered it to Mr. Wymer and in fact recorded the deed for him. So that matter is behind us. The electric ordinance, it's still not quite ready to present to council. I want to make sure that Mr. Clemmons and Mr. Doss, the mayor, and Mr. Martini are all good with that before we advance that before a formal first reading before the council. Michael already mentioned the need to look at the lease on the armory project as well as the sublease. We'll be looking at that between now and hopefully the first week or so in January. The only other matter I think that I'm working on real actively right now is the residency requirement. The more I've gotten to think about that, it's really not just a matter of Mitch Tacey and I getting together, but also Matt Gregory and Michael. I think we ought to have a little committee on that and make sure we're all on the same page as to what we want to do before we actually make a recommendation to council on that. So that's forthcoming as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, but it's been a busy couple of weeks.
David, what would happen if we did not approve and sign franchise agreements with Sudden Light?
We actually threatened to do that one time and they threatened to sue us because under that 1984 deregulatory act, when it comes to renewal, there are some very specific things that can allow a city to not renew, such as if we did a technology study and would show that the services that they've been providing aren't within the levels established by the Federal Communications Commission. I made informal inquiry about that a couple of times over the years with another person that works within the TV cable industry and knows about those things. And apparently those technical requirements are so... those technical requirements are so high in order for us to not be able to renew, that certainly Southern Link is operating within those FCC standards. If we had a log, and they are to keep a log, I believe that's required by the statutes, the federal statutes, as well as by the Public Service Commission. If there were an undue amount of complaints concerning the technical services, things like having to wait days on end to get the service connected, or those kinds of things, that could also possibly spawn the ability to not renew the franchise. I'm really not aware of, the complaint we get here at City Hall, through Clemmons, Dos, me, whoever happens to answer the phone when these calls are made, has to do with the rates. Naturally, people are also irritated. When the electricity goes out, there's no TV cable, and in fairness to the cable company, that's typically not their fault. Every once in a while, something will happen with the cable with the electricity still being on, but that's not a, it's not a real frequent.
Well, if the electricity goes out, you can't watch TV anyway.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, as if it would, but I have had calls before where people have said, "We don't have cable," and, "Well, you don't have electric either, do you?" So sometimes you go, "Well, we have phone, you know, so we should also have cable." Doesn't quite work that way. But we get some interesting calls. Anyway, I hope that answers your question. It's kind of a...
Yeah, it's just a catch twenty-two.
Really between a rock and a hard place. As I mentioned, the mayor wasn't here last time, but he's heard this speech before. The 1984 act was supposed to encourage competition, and again, as I've said again and again, it's not going to happen in a more rurally situated place like Buchanan, West Virginia. The technology is not there to make it affordable yet. In New York City, you could have Comcast and Time Warner and Southern Link all vying from one building to the next, but that, I just don't ever see that happening in Buchanan. The other thing you have in your packet, Mayor, is the transfer in ownership, which they had applied for a number of months ago, and they had to notify the council, and we talked about that. That has been completed, and I think the letter is in your agenda back to the... That's all I have.
Any other questions today? Brings to correspondence, you do have, they just referred to this letter from Southern Link regarding completion ownership change, and that's been done. Brings us to our consent agenda, approval minutes for regular meeting, November 15th, billing and wiring permits, payment of the bills, enhancement of lighting on North Spring and Willard Way, organizational chart, and the holiday schedule. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move they be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussions? No, all in favor, signify. Some say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That brings us to comments and announcements today. Thomas?
The, I would just again make a plea for individuals that have opportunities to ring the bell for Salvation Army, and we can always use volunteers for the next couple weeks. And everybody have a safe couple weeks until we're here next time.
John?
Just following on Dave's comment, food being in tremendous need, in particular here last week, bread and peanut butter, people traveling through, those are two things that they provide people that are traveling by or need those things. So if you're out shopping and you have a chance to pick up an extra loaf of bread or something, people buy that.
Ron?
Just like to urge everybody to shop downtown between now and Christmas, shop locally. Little walk up the street today, stopped in several merchant stores, and they said they have been doing really terrific in the last couple of weeks, and I appreciate the efforts being made here to shop instead of going to Plurk's, to the malls. Have a good couple of weeks and see you on the 20th.
Scott?
I want to second what John said about the need for food and supporting the parish house and various organizations in town, and the advent of aftermath of Sandy and all the season and the cold weather, it's definitely needed at the parish house.
Thank you. Does anybody else out here have anything to say, comments to make? Okay, then we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.